The board meeting, September 23rd. Please rise and reflect. We live like Mr. Ambrosio.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in honoration under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Colonel Grant Baran Ambrosio, your sort of walkie is rinse of today. Okay, just a reminder, there's emergency, the accident. Here the building is here, next is there, also which is the front of the building. In that case of that emergency, you should not get in. Please go to your vehicles. Please do not leave until some direct emergency service personnel. Also, this is an outspoken building, so.
Yes, one approval tonight for the board meeting minutes of September 9th, 2013.
Motion to accept it, present. Motion. Second. Second. Any changes in these provisions? Say it.
Actually, we have an additional request to resolution to reduce the 2013-14 tax code with an amount of $400 for grass cutting fees for property located at 66 of that.
Motion. Second. Second. Favorit. Treasury. Prove it.
Thank you, Mr. May. Can anybody hand me our thing by? Okay. For the period of September 6th through 23rd of September, total bills total 532,993. The five marches, the bills number one, New York State Employee Help, monthly premium, 106,437. Second one is for Rosemore, paving and riding academy, 71,275. That's going at. H2M Engineering, 29,800. Zoo Engineering, J.R. Hulsmacker, 19,195. FEMA and EPA inspection. And same type trust of match redemption, 15,000. Seven, twelve, seventy-eight. And they told 242,423. If I got approval.
Motion to accept it, present. Motion. Second. Any questions? If this is a motion, go to favor.
Okay, I do have a budget adjustment. Appropriate from general fund surplus, $35,000. Upgrade computer servers and related equipment. Current server was purchased in 2007, so you're involved. And if you get into all issues, this will also apply to wireless location in the building. If I could have approval.
Motion. Motion. Second. Second. Favorit.
I do have some transfers that are on your sheet. I'm not going to go through them. There's about five and five. Just to clean up accounts, you're inside.
Motion. Second. Second. Favorit.
Okay, and I also need approval for the general fund for long community development agency, 19,534. Would that reimbursed, it's mostly terrible.
Motion. Second.
Thank you very much.
All right, do you know when we're going to be getting the order?
Yeah, we're going to meet, you and I, Annie, we're going to meet this week. And I would expect maybe the first meeting next month.
Patrick Pryley Ward. As any of you know, that come to meetings, what we attempt to do is recognize those residents who are time and effort into their homes to make the property replaced. It must be nice because over the last year or so, many of them are young families visiting the scene tonight. Which, Mr. Ryan Lovett, we're here. And it's 85 Rosa Avenue. How old?
Seven months. When did you go to that?
2008.
I love it. Really, Scott, really, thank you very much. It really is, you know, it really is important. It's nice in young families coming to the community, even part of the community. See, that's what we do is, we let them drive us everything out of where you are. We can call up to do stuff. Like, I have this very good one, you know, between them, maybe, but seven months. Oh, come on, yeah. Yes. Thank you, thank you very much, really, really. Okay, risk, request approval for a standard workday and reporting resolution for elected and appointed officials. It's just done on a yearly basis for the state, and what it does is just for the state pension fund.
It's for the retirees, yeah.
Motion to accept it, present. Motion. Second. Second. Favorit. Okay. So, vote hearing for 28th, didn't it?
Yeah, October 28th.
October 28th. 143 River Avenue is in the industrial. And we have a request, and in the industrial, I think it's warehouse uses, warehouse space now, but you would like to be able to do some retail business out of it. And you have to come to the village board for that, for a special permit. It's right across from where the, what Maria's, you have the Maria's down there. You have a lot of retail businesses going on there as it is, so that they'll just continue that way. I'd like to have a word for the 28th.
October 12th.
28th. Is it for what, just as special use or? Yeah, special use permit to allow some retail.
Yeah, retail stores, retail uses are permitted in the industrial. Provided a special permission by the board trustees.
You know what, retail? Yeah, it's some occasion for doors, windows, appliances, tools.
He's there now.
Yeah. And you never, you never realize you came into try to formalize it, and then they told us that to formalize it, yes, so. This is code 435, 25, DSA, no more code. Vamos, motion. Second. Second. Favorit. All right. Okay. Dennis, I know it's for six, so he's not here. And I see David Kennedy's not here either. Kevin Mayer. And nobody from the chamber, nobody from the chamber, do you want?
Actually, he had a Saint Magrada, but he is going to get back from that.
Oh. Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief theater report, I just want to congratulate the theater on their first Sunday music in the lobby series yesterday was the tuba. The Long Island Tubaa Association. I'd say they had a great crowd there. I got Facebooked all day about what a great thing, and we just wanted, once again. And I didn't, I wasn't there? I was a tuba player in high school. I was not there.
That's much.
I did, I was. Is anybody else?
How we can understand that?
And I? How was it?
It was fun, I didn't think it would be somebody divides, but it was, it was fun. I wore two, it was odd, but it was fun.
Yeah. Wait a second.
I'm sorry, I threw a friend of a friend blank, and it was, I didn't think it would be what it is, but it was, it was really good. I was surprised the range that those things can do.
Oh, it's pretty amazing what kind of music they can get on a tuba.
Right.
Also, just recently, I guess it was last week or the week before, the theater had their first live in the lobby event. And it was talented in the lobby. Joe was there, I was there, Jerry, Chris said you were there. Very successful, a lot of people, a lot of fun, a lot of things going on at the theater. And, you know, just looking on the website, see what's going on. They're having, in the next few months, weeks, they're having more auditions for Patrick Pizal. For the next edition of Patrick Pizal. So if you have a talent, and you'd like to show it off on the stage at Patrick Theater.
We need a baby baby tuba.
Baby baby, baby tuba. You're right.
You're good, sir.
Theater's looking at a really great season this year. Highlight of the fall will be all of top three for Thanksgiving for Joe East. And I understand he will be doing Alice's restaurant. Yeah, so go to patricktheater.com and see what's going on. I think you'd be very happy with, with all the things that are going on. We need to make a decision tonight? It's the thing. If we need to make a motion tonight? Make a motion to, make a decision on previously held public hearing, amending section 455 of village code according to the installation of electronic parking meters. Want to explain a little bit about that, David?
Sure. This is, this is actually going to be two steps tonight. We had a public hearing previously on, July 3rd, July. With the previously held public hearing, where the public portion was closed and board reserved decision. Board has to make a decision tonight, so it will be in two stages. The first is just the amendment to the village code that sets out, that's designating the parking meter zones. Zone A, zone B, zone C. Zone C already exists, and that's essentially the train station. Zone B are all of the lots that are not Main Street. So the Church Street Lot, the Over Street Lot, Terry Street Lot. Zone A are the portions of Main Street between the boundaries between West Avenue and Rite. And that also includes Parkview, Stockton Avenue, and Rare Island.
Correct.
Yes. So that's the major changes. The other changes that are also included are the ability as laid out operationally with regard to payment by credit card, electronic debit, those kind of things. The other change is that the board, for flexibility, will make, that's the local law, will make any other changes by resolution. So there's going to be two tonight. You have to, one, make a motion to approve the amendments to the code. And the second part is we have to make a resolution setting forth the duration dates and charges for the rear parking, that's also with the trustees' package.
Now, in the future, if these needs to be changed, how would we have to do that?
We could do that by resolution.
So, make a motion? A motion to accept it, present.
So, you want to include the Lake Street Lot eventually?
That would be a local law, that would be a code amendment. Changing the geographic area would be a code amendment.
So, when you're defining zone B doesn't include the Lake Street Lot.
Correct.
And if we wanted to do other municipal lots, we would have to?
Have a public hearing after we were, designate those lots as an amendment to the local law, to the code, to change it. So if we were to put Lake Street in, that would be B4. Like, it's infinitely expandable, and we change the jurisdiction or geography of the zones.
Right, okay. So, or if we purchase new properties, et cetera, et cetera, to expand the parking lots.
And the reason for the resolution was that exact kind of thought, was this is kind of organic, changeable novelty to the village. The thought was to do it by resolution, so this board can be a little more involved. So if there are concerns that get expressed to this board, instead of going through the local law process, where we have to make repeated amendments and wait time and set public hearings, the thought was to designate the zones, set those, define certain terms in the local law, and then move by resolution in the future, so you have to choose tonight.
So right now, we're just voting on the actual?
Local law.
Local laws, okay. The local laws, okay.
I had requested, and still, you know, I'm sure I'll get it from Ron or Henry, is that the accounting of, you know, hard and soft costs of implementing this whole program. I wanted to somehow make sure, and I didn't see it, because my rule that our general funds get reimbursed. You could, or we look to spend this money on this sort of?
Then we get the, um.
Okay.
So, she has a couple of ones set up on the way.
Set up separately.
It's not set up. Let's go down there and do it.
I'll go down there and do it, and just, you know, just, you know, we're investing a lot of money to make this program, make sure it's going to be very successful in the years to come. We just want to make sure that the residents get reimbursed for all of our costs of, and then beyond our costs, then if we want to look to acquire land or improve lots, you know, ultimately, add that one to the use, so we just want to make sure that we're able to. So, I'll check with you.
Motion, Jack? I make a motion to approve. Second. Favorit. No motion to? Second, we're ready, second, we're ready. All right, yeah.
Should we just take this now? In New York?
I'd make a motion to approve this resolution, setting the duration dates and charges for rear parking spaces. Make a motion. Second. Favorit.
Very, very important question, maybe we can make an addition to this. We had that for zone B, which would be the municipal lots, that the residents of the village would need to feed the meter.
Correct.
And I'm wondering if there's a way in which we could add that language to this resolution that, that within the municipal lots, that residents that if you have current or valid permits, resident permits stickers on their vehicles, that they wouldn't have to feed the meter. And that would only be for the zone B, not the roads, but we had discussed that the residents wouldn't, zone B and zone C, which is the train station.
Yeah, we have to get that in.
Okay. Oh, yeah. So we can amend that, just, that'd be great, thank you. But like, we make a motion to approve with the amendment.
Second. 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 Favorit. All right. So I have this there. Mr. Kennedy? Chamber.
Good evening, good to be here. And I apologize for being late, and I know this was going on, and it would be the first thing, so I apologize. I'm assuming everything we discussed in the committee, there hasn't been any significant change? That's who I wanted, that's my only fear.
Nothing's been changed.
Nothing. And I didn't hear mentioned, this, where the shape really doesn't include the things about the employee, because that's more of a policy as opposed to legislation? Or is that addressed in the, in the law, the employment?
It was addressed in.
Oh, well, it's addressed in the law, and it was basically, we talked about the sticker situation.
Well, please, make sure, David, for your own comfort, I saw this gentleman willing his son down the street, he had his suit on.
That's good to know. Well, first, of course, I want to talk about our tech break on Saturday. Again, thank the village for working with us, and we really, overstepped our expectations. We would have been happy if we got 30 to 50 pets, we actually had 82 that actually signed up to participate. It was a really good crowd, it was a fun event, everybody really enjoyed it. And the best thing is the Suffolk County Coalition for Domestic Violence raised a few bucks for their cause, and got great awareness out of it. And it's something we're looking forward to do again next year. We got a great foundation to build from. In particular, I want to make sure I thank trustee Hilton, who worked directly with our committee, personally put the cones down Main Street, personally locked off with the cones in the parking lot for the expo. Really appreciate all the effort. And I thank you, I mean, this all started really, my first village board meeting as in the new job. So this was the first event that I kind of saw from the beginning to the end, and it was nice to see that turn out to be such a very success. Now, we got our Saint Magrada festival coming up this Saturday. Very excited about this, we really got an excellent participation from our, our main street restaurants and food places are all, pretty much majority, we're all going out with something out on the street. Our bocce ball tournament looks to be the biggest one we've had so far. 10 teams have already signed up to participate, it's the first time we actually had it organized before the event. We're setting up the time, it's going to be an excellent tournament.
David, excuse me, where's the court?
The court is going to be located on the strip of land between the Bargain Village and the Brookhaven Memorial Hospital. There's a long stretch of land in there. So, and even, we have the Sons of Italy motorcycle. You'll be able to find the bocce ball court, because there's about 30 people in this Sons of Italy motorcycle group who actually sell cannolis on top of bringing their bikes down. So that will be a good marker to find where the bocce ball court is, we're going to have them hanging out down there. But it's going to be a lot of fun. The Journal was very successful, our John Frankie did a nice job, I think they got the most money they ever raised in the Journal as well this year, so. And the weather so far looks good, so I think everything is going to be a beautiful day. After that will be our Fall Harvest Festival, that's October the 26th. That's coming together good, we're going to have a costume parade down Main Street, we're going to have a chili and chowder contest with the area restaurants, it's going to be pumpkin painting, and we are working in conjunction with the Riverfront and some of the activities that they're doing down there. And that's, I'm going to use that to segue into, I just want to, go ahead.
Yes.
That's, yeah, again, early in the day, I guess the parade's probably.
Eleven.
Right, and.
They're through by, you can't.
By 11:30, right, so, right. So you're basically going to close till 11, I guess, just keep it closed, so then we'll just start setting up at that point. And then, yes, as I was saying, we're working with the Riverfront on that, and we are working with the Riverfront Committee on a few things, and my goal of making them part of the chamber. I was aware at their last meeting, there, you know, was a letter from the village, I just want to make sure, because I did volunteer to be the person to get any approvals we need, or whatever, and this is just talking about the events, nothing beyond that. If there's anything I need to do, letters I need to write, or anything I need to get more permission wise from you guys, I just want to make sure, you know, I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
There are certain property issues that have to be dealt with.
Yes, and I understand, and that's nothing to do, you know, that's.
And before he can go forward with it, the other part of the plan that he has, he needs to reconcile those with us.
Okay.
So you realize that.
And there's an understanding that that's going to be reconciled first, before you could at least give a sign up on the event, is basically how I can, we understand to be.
And I don't know if you saw the letter, but I expressed those concerns to his attorney. I haven't had a response yet. I know there's been some informal discussion with trustee Hilton with regard to propose a resolution, but the village has serious concerns about that site until those property issues get resolved. It's not optimal to host an event here when there are site conditions.
Understood. And I would assume that I would follow through with the boat parade. That's another thing I would, you know, we'd be discussing and pushing forward on their behalf, but hopefully at that point it has to be resolved.
Boat parade's going to happen with him or without him?
Sure.
I mean, he's not going to stop the boat parade. Some of these other events that generate, and beginning in on his property, are the ones I'm concerned about. You know, the boat parade itself, are you going to be using the Seashore property again?
Yes.
That double the, the Homer Crab Addison is involved in it, or the Oar, if their, their business is on the river. But in terms of a large event that is pretty insular, that's the location, the primary seat of the event is what we have to deal with.
I mean, that's really everything that's coming up. Oh, we have our night casino this Thursday. Your old one, welcome to join us, it's our annual trip over to Davis Park Casino, it's always a lot of fun. 5:30 is when the ferry will leave, we'll hope to get everybody back here by 9:30 after a nice dinner at the, at the casino restaurant. And the only thing I'm going to add, because I know coming up tonight, there's an application being discussed, and there's going to be discussion about tattoo parlor on Main Street, I did, or on the business district, and just talk about the legislation. This is something I did bring up before the, the board directors, and I think the general consensus of the board, though, there was no official position, the board really wants to see how this hearing goes, and where the village stands, before there's any official position from the chamber. But I think the general idea of recognizing that tattooing is in a different, we're in a different age now than we were when legislation was written 30 years ago, we recognize that and see that, I think a lot of people who are chamber members have sons and daughters and nephews and cousins that are all, you know, participate in tattooing and understand it's different. And I did get to meet with the people who will be discussing this application with you a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to say that, I just found them to be very professional, very respectful, and I give them a lot of credit for the homework that they did in a very respectful and professional way that they're presenting themselves, so I just wanted to say that on my behalf.
I guess your disappointment that is that it's not allowed in D3 as to the code, it's allowed with basically D1, D2. D1, D2, basically, D112, the Waverly Avenue, back to Jazzback over. But right now, it is not.
Right, and that's, I guess, the, the discussion. But I mean, I just only, I mean, I know the library is on the board of directors, there was a concern about the, the location, that was the one, I guess, concern when we brought up before the chamber, the board of directors that came up, but in general, though, but the concept, I think, is that there is a recognition that we have a, a change in clientele on Main Street, and, you know, tattooing is a very accepted practice, and, you know, if there's business to be had, you know, why not include Hatch Off this far and get in that business as well? All right, thank you very much.
David, back to the, the heart of both. Are they, are they still talking about Rag and Muffin Parade going to town?
Yeah, on the Fall Festival, October the 26th. Their, their concept is that at some point they want to be able to parade a group down West Avenue to get them from the Riverfront in the late morning to the, to Main Street.
Well, that, that in itself is going to have to be presented to the board, please.
Okay, I mean, I know we discussed it at the last one, and I thought there was a general, but I should put that more in a formal, I'll just put a letter out, a form of request. I thought at the last meeting, at least it seemed like there was an acceptance of that concept of using West Avenue as opposed to, I think the original proposal was South Ocean?
Right.
And we just said that that wouldn't work, but West Avenue would, was the consensus, the feeling I got at the last meeting.
Well, for code enforcement and for those liability, we have to know route, the time, who their volunteers are, how they're addressing the intersections, what roads they need, what block, cones, the whole.
I'll have that all spelt out in a, in a letter form.
I hope to go, you know, to their next meeting, their last meeting was on the same day as this meeting.
Right, all right. I think the next one is Wednesday night, is the next time that we get together. Any other questions? Thank you.
Your presentation. Village Body and Art Gallery.
This is a proposal, it's really just so individualized. Good evening, Mayor, and House of Board members. My name is Hyman Delaweez. I reside at 33 Jamaica Avenue in Nefert. Parentage ask you to consider amending the law with the code 4521 to allow a tattoo parlor in the D2 and D3 switchboards. The current code is 41 years old, and we feel that it really doesn't fit with the current times anymore. Village tattoos have worked very hard to present an image of both catering to the arts and the younger adult community. A prime example of this is the art space. Today tattoos are a mainstream form of art, sought after by all types of people, doctors, lawyers, teachers, college students, mothers, fathers, and everyone is proudly wearing tattoos. I understand reservations that some people have with tattooing, sure, yes, I had them myself a few years ago. I grew up in a house where tattooing was not accepted. It was looked down upon, my grandmother taught me to believe that anyone who had a tattoo or participated in tattooing was low class of the century. When I was 20, I went to the city with my friends, and I wanted to be a cool kid, so I went and got a tattoo. I was tattooed by completely unprofessional people, they weren't certified, ended up with an awful tattoo, an awful experience, and I was embarrassed to just even tell anyone that I had a tattoo. Ended up with an awful tattoo, an awful experience, and I was embarrassed to even tell anyone that I had a tattoo. My grandmother's thoughts that she instilled in me had come true. And I really had a bad image of the entire tattoo industry. So you can imagine that when my husband decided to tell me that he wanted to be a tattoo artist, I was less than thrilled. He fought a lot. And he promised me that he was not going to be a drug-abusing derelict, which is what I used when I spoke to him. And told me that he was really into the art and wanted to be a true professional. So I had my reservations, but I finally happened to follow his dream, and I'm really glad that I did. I've now seen the tattoo industry from both the inside and the out. Tattooing in the twenty-first century is much different. Most artists really are professionals, just like painters. The only difference is, they choose to use human skin as their canvas. And in some ways, their job is even more important, as their work is permanent on someone's body for the rest of their life. There's a special bond between a client and a tattoo artist. Many times, a client is putting a piece on their body that has deep-rooted meaning, whether it's memorial to a lost loved one or something to symbolize a really important event that happened in their life. I watch mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, grandmothers, grandfathers, husbands, wives, soldiers, veterans, cancer survivors, many others get tattoos. All of them are everyday people just like you and me. Mark Delwees, who's known by many of his clients as Buster, a nickname that was bestowed upon him in childhood by his grandfather because he liked to break everything, will be the owner and main artist in the shop. He has been tattooing on and off for eleven years and has been certified in South County for the past three years. Mark's been an artist his entire life, from drawing, teaching, and even attending college, progressive design at NYIT. He's been Catholic during the day to support his daughter, Anne Mae. And everyone who knows him loves him. He's a really genuine person, and he makes his clients feel very comfortable. He holds his artwork in high regard. Diane Sedowski will be joining him. Diane has also been tattooing in South County for three years. She's a mother of three wonderful, beautiful young women and has also had a background, deep rooted in the arts. She's a very accomplished painter and is even marked as a police sketch artist in South County. Both Mark and Diane are very hard workers who love to share their art with their community. They both lead drug and smoking-free lives, and their clients are everyday people. Some of them are here today to show their support. If you turn to the first full page of the proposal, you'll find the location that we would like to operate at is Ninety-eight Perry Street. Many surrounding businesses, such as Village Idiot, Very Good Yogurt Cafe, and Roast Coffee and Tea Trading Company, have openly expressed their support, as well as many of the residents of the art space community. The issue of being closer to art space or even in the apartments themselves have been recommended. But we have not been able to find a suitable location where our permit from the South County Board of Health would be able to be secured. The next page is an exterior view of how we would like the business to appear. We do not want any neon lighting or signs that scream tattoo. We want the exterior to have a classy, clean look, with nothing more than the name of our business on the existing awning and an open sign in the middle window. There will also be a sign that prohibits smoking and lightering outside of the studio. And this is a strict policy that will be enforced by all employees. We're also looking to scavenge the windows tinted so that you can't see him. Many times, people bring family or friend, a family member or a friend with them while they're getting tattooed. As can be seen on the next page of the proposal, we will be offering a large waiting area with a full art gallery for those guests to help cut down on the lightering outside of the studio. Ground will have home artwork as well as custom jewelry and showcase. Currently, we are working with a wine distributor of soda like pine cones, which is one of the pine jewelry pieces made from pine cones, all organic. The ground will also feature a bank of tablets where people may view the artwork of our artists, as well as artists that may be working or displaying with us in the near future. We do plan on closing the studio for tattooing from time to time and having art shows in the gallery area where local artists may showcase their work for sale. The tattoo area will be completely separate from the gallery and waiting area, as this is a requirement from the South County Board of Health. There will be four tattoo stations. All these stations will be open to one another, but privacy screening will be made available at a client's request. Close to our ideas of how we would like the studio to appear, as well as blueprints of the studio, which we also have a large on-eeze behind bank. If you turn to the next page, we have listed that an artist must obtain a license to perform body art in South County. Each artist must take a bloodborne pathogens test and quex. They must also study under an artist in good standing in South County for a minimum of a thousand hours. South County has some of the strictest requirements in the country for tattoo licensing. Court of Health also provides forms to be filled out prior to receiving a body art procedure, as well as proper aftercare instructions. All clients must also have a valid form by date. At no time will we ever perform a body art procedure on anyone who appears to be under the influence of drugs or alcohol. We understand that there is a growing bar scene on Main Street. And if a client really comes in and wants work, we will offer them discount cards so that they can return when they are sober to have their work done. A few ideas that we have for giving back to the community are art classes and different fundraisers, as well as participating in events like Live After Five. For the art classes, our artists at the studio would like to share their knowledge of art in the numerous meetings. Different ideas for fundraising have been thought through. One idea is cancer-ridden tattoos, with proceeds going to the American Cancer Society. Mark has done a specific type of fundraiser at other tattoo shops that he's worked at, and this has been received very well by the community. It's usually done in the month of October for Rest Cancer Awareness Month. Almost everyone has died from body cancer in one way or another, whether you battle it yourself or you know someone who has. Even those who don't get tattooed usually come to me and donate money to the cause. We have seen shops hold fundraisers where the tattoo proceeds for a set period of time go to the local art council or a local school district art department, because it's usually the first thing that gets cut in a school's budget. Mark specializes in tattoo cover-ups. And we'd like to hold fundraising weeks where part of the proceeds of the tattoo cover-ups that he does will be donated to the Village for communication purposes. Sort of a we fix a tattoo, you fix a village. A quick local search of the tattoo shop fundraisers will yield you numerous successful results by shops around the country. It's become a very accepted thing in many communities. Currently, both artists have clientele from all of Long Island, as well as five boroughs, Westchester and even New Jersey. This brings many new visitors to the Village. Many times, our patrons will browse the local area while waiting for their artist to draw a custom design or go out for dinner and drinks after they've received their body art. We also are proposing that for every hundred and fifty dollars worth of work received, we will offer a ten-dollar gift certificate to a local bar or restaurant of the customer's choosing. Obviously, we need to speak with local businesses a little bit more about this. But if our proposal is approved, we do plan on purchasing gift certificates for this purpose. As a courtesy to our neighbors and to help keep our professional appearance, there will be no loud music from the shop. Each tattooing station will be equipped with its own music player and headphones. This not only keeps down noise, but it also allows each one of our clients to listen to music without affecting anyone else. We've heard that there is a concern over the proposed location and its proximity to the Hatch Off Methodist Library. Majority of tattoo work is done after six or seven P.M. at night, sometimes even later, when people are getting home from work, have their children settled, and so forth. At this late at night, as a mother and professional childcare provider, I can say that it is reasonable to assume that most young children are already home, eating dinner, getting ready for school the next day, and going to bed. The older children will soon be at the new Harmony Library location. Again, we will also not tolerate any lightering, will not tolerate smoking, and we don't want any blatant signage that says tattoo. Our clients are normal people, many of whom are parents that bring their children to the library, I'm one of them. We do not feel that our business should be any more of a concern than the numerous bars and pubs that are already on Main Street, and we may even be less noticed. We have brought along portfolios of Mark and Diane's work that you may view, as well as the articles provided by the South County Board of Health regarding how tattoos should go and artists should operate. We also have our permit of approval to have a tattoo studio at the proposed location from the South County Board of Health. There are currently eighty permitted establishments in South County and an estimated eight hundred underground establishments that are not permitted. We're trying to legalize this business and legitimize it and do it the safe and correct way. We hope that you review this proposal, as well as the requested business plan, and will favor changing this update law and allow one of the fastest-growing industries in America to operate within the boundaries of Village Hatch Off. Thank you for your time.
What do you expect your hours of visiting to be?
Well, Mark has day job until three-thirty, so he wouldn't be even getting to the shop to open up until four-thirty, five P.M. And then on Saturdays, it would probably be a start at twelve, but even on Saturdays, most clients don't come in until after they've had dinner and spent the day with family, so it's still.
Closing time?
Ten P.M. during the week and midnight on Friday and Saturday.
Thank you very much. What will happen is, before we discuss it, and get back, we'll get back if you want. Because the next step will be the settlement of a public hearing. I'm not prepared to do that at this point, Tom. I'll just sit with the Village Attorney and talk a little bit more about the legal side of it.
Okay. We also would like to meet with you and see.
Sure, Maggie. I was gonna say, your presentation was excellent, by the way. It was better, very perfect. I think you missed your call when you went to the law school. Just so you understand the context of what this was. This was and the Board as well. Because trustee Hilton mentioned it, it wasn't advertised. You're seeking changes to the Village Code.
Yes.
One, there's a change in that tattooing is prohibited in the piece of the order section. The second request is that the location where you're proposing this in D-three.
Yes.
In D-three, and D-two is prohibited.
Right.
Technically, under the code D-one, as the mayor said, it's allowed in ways that are illegal, despite the general provision. There is a bit of inconsistency there. This is really just for the Board to consider it a set of public hearing. It's at their discretion to do it.
Right.
So they'll make a decision whether it will come up on one of the trustees or the mayor's or deputy mayor's agendas to put forth the public hearing, which would then require the notice and all those things to make that amendment to the law. So that's just for the Boards, obviously, and that's where the context is now.
There's also an application process.
Correct. Well, should, yeah, once we've set, we, once we set the public hearing, then you would have to do the presentation again to make the application for why the law would be changed. Again, it would be two-part. Not only you seeking the change from opening the tattoo prohibition, but you're also seeking amendment to the zoning code to allow it in this specific location.
Yeah. And we know that there, there's already been amendments to the zoning code, because the way that it's worded, nightclubs, strip clubs, cabberies, and so forth are also not allowed. But then underneath it says with a special permit, cabberies may.
Right.
And that's really the way it works.
Right.
That's, that's what the public hearing would be about if we sort of decided to go forward with it. To get, to have that discussion, to find out whether this Board, the committee, wants it to go forward. But I need to take a look at this. I think that you're meeting with the Village Attorney appropriate, it's not, and we'll take a recommendation back.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. Trustee Keith.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, ladies and gentlemen. I have a couple of things. Really, I didn't make the list to tell you, but I want to understand the public people out there. They're well off about a dish. I'm sure you've talked about it.
It's got a good stage.
I heard it went up very well. Public service announcement, actually. As mentioned, this is where I was meeting the Friends of, Friends of Feline are running, hosting a Friends of Feline barrel fundraiser. I have a hunt on the tee this Thursday, seven o'clock. It is for good cause, so when you get off the ferry, nine-thirty, if you guys want to have a beer and go to a couple of clubs, it's very charitable. It's from seven to ten.
Will I take my three cats?
Excuse me?
Will I take two?
Will I take my three cats?
I suppose they will, because they're three cats. But it should be a pretty good night, I think, you know, for good cause. At this point, by the way, one of the things we fear is that when, you know, we publicize that we actually have people doing this good work, sometimes they take that as license to drop the cats being killed. So I do want to remind the public that our being them and obviously jumping of any of the feral animals will be strictly enforced, strictly, obviously. Tomorrow, actually, I'm meeting with Damon and Marion and hopefully Dennis Smith at the auction of our store front, the shop front, if you can. Started a, what we like to call a R and R project, everyone can use a R and R once in a while. And this is R and R for racks and roots. We're looking to purchase some bike racks, and that's where the CDA and the DCA can invest, they have the money, hopefully, to be placed throughout the village. The roots fund, try to meet with trustee Hilton for his expertise in designing some sort of bike. This is not, you know, the leisure bike. What we have in mind kind of is for people living in the village, try to encourage them to use their bikes to get downtown rather than drive. Because there are some people who think we have a parking problem. I don't know where they got that. Take your bicycle and, you know, you won't have to worry about finding a parking spot. A little pain in the knee, for that matter. So anyway, just hopefully, you know, getting started. I suspect that the racks are heated, they get the roots, we probably won't see till, till the springtime. But anyway, we're up to that as well. Probably notice railroad avenues closed. The Silverline project is progressing well down there. Expect to hopefully be finished by Columbus Day, the Green Silverline and the Lateral, the businesses down there, which have been paved as well. Probably in the springtime, start that south rush pump station and get some, we can have it down that area, block of traffic. I do want to mention, I mentioned this last time too, but just a reminder for the CDA, this October meeting, which is October third, it will be at five o'clock. And it's a public hearing, which will be announced, obviously, to discuss the CDVG funding. So hopefully has, has an opportunity to come and, you know, question their own opinion and ideas and thoughts about how we can spend the money on any projects that they have in their mind. Now, I think for my wish list. I'm requesting approval for the junior class of Patrick Griffin High School to use the DPW yard to assemble a homecoming vote for Monday, October twenty-first, October twenty-fifth. I think that every year, I believe that's enough. Thank you. Requesting approval for AES safety, to provide OSHA safety training, safety training to DPW staff at a hundred and fifty dollars per person, so probably somewhere around nine thousand. We, I don't know if we've done it on the Village now, but I know that this year particularly, we had kind of a tough, tough season. We had, you know, four or five deaths at one time, which obviously hurt the productivity with so much going on in the village. You can't, you know, you slow down. So the safety training, believe it or not, you know, I think it just sets a different mindset for guys. Maybe teach them how to work a little more cautiously. In my former life, I was, I headed a safety team and we introduced a lot of these safety training programs to a lot of our employees. And actually noticed a drastic reduction in injuries in cities as well. That was about twenty-five years ago, so I think that changed. But the idea was that, more than anything else, I think it develops a different mindset in the way that things that they can do that they may not be aware of, you know, that could protect themselves and cut down an injury, then certainly would help offer activity by keeping, you know, a full force in place. So that is a.
So how's, how's it set up? Like one-day, two-days, more days?
There is a, I think in here, in the faculty, I'm sure, and I believe it's a one-day course. It's gonna be, to be determined as far as the location. It's a ten-hour course, so, which may obviously then make it a two-day course. It's a ten-hour, it's a ten-hour.
Does it, doesn't OSHA in New York State apply that at Oakville?
They may very well.
Actually, if I can interject, Anne Rimanti searched every year, and nobody is giving us voices.
The chief of student guard is online, or he's fired.
I believe you can go into the city and do a two-day course with them. They've got a good course, and everybody's in the city.
Quite used to do that.
So do we, are these manned up, paid things?
They're gonna have time.
Can we add the parts to that?
Yeah, yeah, I think the part, you know, the parts.
So where, here, I think, part of the door, here.
We have, and my son has one. Yeah. Good. We thought we did it. Question, oh, is that a wow? Yeah.
Okay. I thought it was a lot of states down and out. Did any of the mayor's motion?
Second, a little bit.
Thank you, two other things which are not on your agenda. I'm requesting approval to go out to bid the seasonal rental of a small wheel, wildcat, skid steer loader, and helping with the snow removal.
Sidewalks, that's for.
Uh, sidewalks and the small wildcat loader that you were talking about, you know, for, uh, like, I don't know, some kind of little sidewalks, different stuff, which probably be, I don't know.
Is that gonna be on a need basis, or just a lot?
We're gonna make it, we'll, it will happen.
But we still guarantee it won't stop.
No guarantee it will not snow, but I'm sure we'll find work.
No, I mean, going out doing it, you know, it's like, like buying a snowblower.
Right, yeah, right, the snowballs that everybody's shit, brings back, you know, yeah, I know. Oh, we used to put something else in there.
I'm sure you, uh.
If this is a guarantee with the snow, I think there's investment in everything. That's a motion.
Okay.
Two other questions, collect. The one I'm gonna have to deal with.
I oppose the, uh.
Um, requesting approval to hire per diem labors as needed.
Let's go out to bid.
To bid.
Oh, just to go out to bid.
Go out to bid.
Yeah.
That's what I did, no, exactly. You know, that just because, what, like, twenty percent?
Yeah, obviously, if the bids come back higher, then we, we should go. If this is how the figures are spending on it, then, right, you have to write tonight a baller.
Right.
We've done nothing for, you know, something that the prices came back much more than what we had expected to be with this time. Forget about it. So, we can figure that, we'll look at that. Um, requesting approval to hire per diem labors as needed during weather-related events, um, snow shovelers, maybe given the snow, people might need some extra help, we may need some extra help with people, uh, cleaning up the gray and moving brush and stuff. We actually did this last year and approved it, but it was recommended that we make this an annual thing, I mean, you know, we, we, uh, fees, twelve dollars an hour.
How do we make that determination? Why didn't we create a call, or, I mean, this is something that just, a per diem basis?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, per diem throughout a lot of, I mean, it's done in a lot of different places, but it's kind of, you know, I have to find from Joe exactly who makes the call, so I got that, I don't know, but, um, if we're gonna get, you know, for the snow, if you've got something you can't handle, you know, call and get a couple of experts, make sure a lot.
You know, I normally discuss that stuff before it's, before he does it.
Yeah.
But it really is, it's part of what his job is.
It's gonna depend on what, you know, what, what weather-related event it's open.
Well, I would imagine you would budget an anticipated amount, just like the budget for the, for the rain, the snow, and then if you don't spend it, you go, I mean, it's a poor act.
And how do we vet these people, I mean, does he get to these people, or, uh, how does he hire them?
There's usually a, I mean, like I said, I don't know exactly what call he makes, but, um, there is a, he had his, actually, I said, I published, I got that approved today as well. Um, there is a, he, he's got.
The list is normally made up of the guys that work during the summer, part-time guys during the summer.
Yeah.
You know, whole list of, you know, the kids that work, just go back to that list.
Yeah.
Just start going through it. The other ones that just shovel corners, shovel the drains out, all the angel stuff.
Right.
That I would want to do at two o'clock in the morning, for twenty-eight, do the snow block.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't gonna be something where we're gonna bring it to this, uh, please, it's gonna be something that those times will overwhelm, you know, we're gonna get, you know, the sanding and stuff like that, or the, you know, eighteen and snow storms, through the, you know, the, you know, everybody in the village pulling up because the parking lot's not clean, or the sidewalk's not clean, or this, you know, brush trees down, lines down, it's, uh, it's, uh, just a way for us to get some extra body that develops a, a low price, actually.
So it's twelve dollars an hour?
Twelve dollars an hour, it's an absentee to basic, and like last year, obviously, we had a totally mild weekend, we didn't use it, but we did prove it, you know, last year.
So we did the big snow, the, the thirty?
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah.
But, but the other part about it is also, it's historically, it's a, it's a, we give reimbursement, we give reimbursement, we, um, manage those big storms anymore.
Is it, is there a cap on how much we have to spend on that?
It's a budget, I don't know. It's part of the, it's part of the snow, like, we've been doing, for as long as I've been here, I mean, I've been a part of twenty years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, I mean, it would take something like.
Yeah, it's, it's the first time we've ever voted up for, 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 just been part of.
No, we actually proved the last year, two months, we printed the same thing last year.
But it's just always been part of what, what happened, or, yeah.
It was, it was just recommended that we do it annually rather than just use the same way last year.
I mean, it's just, historically, we've always gotten reimbursement in town, and it's just kind of, we're, you know, then more cautious about the, we spend money, it's just, uh, when it comes to snow removal, it's just, I wish there was a cap.
Yeah, I don't think anybody pays more attention to what we're spending there than we probably, Joe and Ann Marie, so it's not something where we're just gonna pull these guys in, you know, we, oh, I, yeah, we are very mindful of what the budget is and, uh, how difficult it may be to stay with, unless you stay around the top of the apartments, you know, that's why I'm, I don't know, back to our shared services, social services of the county for us, that's, we have a number of, I mean, that's a big, big part for us, and so, you know, we're willing to pay as much attention to this.
Motion to adjourn.
Joe, Joe motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Man, that's all.
Just want, I'd just like to get a confirmation from Dave as well, is that on October sixteenth, uh, he didn't mention, which one of my, is going to be a, um, a recognition of riverfront businesses, um, at the installation meeting, and, which, where is that gonna be, you're gonna, where?
At the Sunset Harbor Club.
Sunset Harbor Club.
Thank you, Jerry, I did forget to mention, I appreciate that.
Uh, just wanted to make sure everybody puts that on their calendars, including the riverfront businesses as well as the Parks and Rec Department, and, um, uh, it's just a good way to, uh, you know, show your appreciation of everything that the Chamber does throughout the year and many of the riverfront businesses, so, um, and what time does that start, Dave, again?
Uh, cocktails at six, uh, dinner, dancing starts at seven.
Okay. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Man.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, I, I've got a couple of things. Uh, first of all, I'd like to compliment Billy, Trustee Hill, uh, Parks and Rec and Code Enforcement for, uh, conducting two super smooth, non-intrusive events this past weekend. Uh, the, uh, the Pet Parade, I mean, Billy was out there, comes up, it was, you know, I was notably against it, but it was very successful.
So was I, for the last.
And then again, Sunday, uh, the run was, was, was really great.
That was fun.
Really good. Then I'd like to compliment Trustee Keys and Joe Dean for the many flat streets that I'm experiencing in the village lately. And, uh, lastly, I'd like to compliment the Chamber. Uh, the Pet Parade was really successful, but also the, the beautification committee, and I guess we have to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Bojack and Joe Miller for, uh, maintaining those plants on Main Street. People don't realize what the beauti, you know, the beautification committee is all volunteer. I mean, the, the, a lot of the really good-looking stuff in the village with regard to plants and the lack of litter and so on is because people are out there picking stuff up, volunteering. And, well, I should mention Paula Murphy's here as well, because I think she's the chair of that committee.
Just a note to that, the other day, uh, Mayor City Glenn called Ralph Swazie, came to Patchard to see what we're doing, and kind of walked him around. Yeah, and during the conversation, we walked in the theater, and I made the comment that it was two full-time employees, half-dozen part-time employees, and eight, eight volunteers. Then we walked by the garden, walked around art space, and then made a comment about the garden, and how do you, how do you get your parks department and your highway staff to keep the garden away the gardens? I said, because it isn't our parks and recreation, I said, it's probably forty or fifty volunteers that show up on a regular basis and take care of it. I said, we may go to lawn, fix the light bulbs, you know, move some stuff around, do physical things, and we're just amazed, and, well, I talked about the fact, I said, we have people that never walk the streets on a regular basis, and I mentioned you, John, you know, that, that day I saw you just picking out dead flowers. I said, it is, it is part of just a whole sense of volunteerism that we have in the community, and that many of the people who volunteer to theater, volunteer there, and those that don't volunteer there, maybe that part of the Patchard Arts Council's been volunteer there, so that there's, there's this sense of volunteerism, I think, that grew out of this little community that we call Patchard, and it makes it a better place for what you do, and we do appreciate it, because it is time, so, I know many who enjoy the garden and so forth, it's part of what you love to do, you're still gonna do it, still gonna take precious time out of your lives to do it, it's much appreciated.
They also just put up a fabulous new sign, which, the, uh, really, really looks good. On, on a more serious note, uh, there was a fire on West Avenue last week, uh, houses pretty much destroyed, and it turns out that it was an abandoned property. People living in that house were squatters, not paying any rent, but making sure that gas bills and water bills got paid. And, uh, year, several years back when I was on zoning, uh, I got to look at houses that on the outside looked like perfectly nice houses, but were carved up into eight living spaces on the inside. Uh, the only way that, you know, we have, we have housing codes for a reason, uh, for health and safety of residents, uh, and, and, really, to maintain property values. And the only way the village is going to see these places is if residents call them in. And I love, I love the passion, the Adventist Newsday, we talk about this, but if, if you see a property that has, uh, too many satellite dishes, too many cars parked in front of it, uh, too many, too many meters, okay, give, give house, give the village a call, and, you know, our guys will go out and check it out. But, you know, nobody was hurt in this fire, but, you know, our volunteer firemen are there risking their lives trying to put a, a frigging blaze out. And, you know, I, I feel sorry for the people living there, but that place was abandoned for a year, and we didn't know it, and on my block, okay? So, you know, uh, just, just the people, the residents of the village need to look out for these things, and if you see something, you should, you need to report it. You're not turning a criminal, you know, maybe you are, so, thank you, that's it.
And one of the things, and you should also play with, bring your cell phone, or some place at home, have the phone number four-seven-five-one-two-two-two, which is Patchard Fire Department. It was interesting, like, after I called the, uh, the firehouse, I was talking to Billy Rouse today, and he said, he didn't, uh, the young lady that was on the front door was calling nine-one-one. He didn't get the call from nine-one-one for four minutes. By the time it went from there to the fire dispatch to the village, four-seven-five-one-two-two-two, or four-seven-five-one-two-two-five, one or the other, will get you directly to the fire department, and will get you a response, probably seventy-three to five minutes, and then that fire, as you waited, then it took three minutes, the stuff was up to the attic in the village, right? So, just a little piece of information, that's been interesting.
I'm done. So, thank you, devil.
Did you mention the people who were in town at the Rouse Foundation?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, Mayor Panteri hosted a group of individuals and a design team sponsored, sponsored by the Rouse Foundation, and I guess it's, uh, just correctly come rolling competition amongst municipalities and design teams to address and possibly help us to evaluate and solve some of our parking issues in a creative fashion. So, we had a great group of people, um, Justin Creed was there, and the mayor. And we took a fantastic tour with people from, from all over, the one I was with was from Williamsburg, Brooklyn, and I have to say that they were very impressed with our full Village Patch, uh, so we're looking forward to seeing what, um, what solutions that come up for us in this, do you wanna come back?
Just real quick, the architectural firm is called Dub, and I went on the line and looked at it. It's a huge organization.
Really?
And the one on the index, and for those of you that know or don't know, that every year they, they do a study on something. Uh, they've done diversity, they've done economic, they've done, um, affordable housing, they've done housing in general, and it's, they've done it every year, and Billy and I, we once went a few years back and partied in that. And this one here is they've been four communities, and what they're doing is they're evaluating us and saying, this is the way you can put your parking, this is the cost, this is the way you could design, and this is the way you could design for multiple uses, or maybe you don't design to be important, if you purchase property. And, uh, being there on the cup by them, and then we'll be presented in January.
So I'm surprised to see that they come up with that screening, it was a nice group of people. So I just have a couple, a couple of other things. If you see me running out at seven-thirty tonight at Plaza Mac, there's a documentary about the long metal date of American community, in particular the Schenoch Necks. It's also a fundraiser, it's fifteen dollars, it's supposed to be an excellent documentary, so I'm really looking forward to getting up there in twenty minutes. Uh, I was at Plaza Mac the other night, and they had a very interesting presentation, a filmmaker from Dix Hills did a documentary on Morton Downing Jr. Does anybody remember Mark D? Did you hear? And he was there, and this is, this is what Plaza Mac does, if you don't look at their schedule, check it out, because they have great little events, and they've always got the filmmakers present, and they can be there to answer questions, so it was, uh, it was a very interesting evening, I enjoyed that.
Frida, one of the coming, they have one coming up, Frida, which is about the Secretary of Customs.
Oh, I didn't even know that. Really? I missed that. Oh, okay. I'll have to look for that one. A couple of other things, uh, coming up this weekend in the lobby of the theater is Life After Life, which is, um, an original musical written by Patchard Village resident Howard Beckerman, who is, what, with the art space. So it's Saturday night, I believe, or?
It's Saturday, it's Sunday.
Seven P M, and Sunday at two P M.
Three P M.
Three P M. So, check out Life After Life, and I think it's gonna be a little bit, uh, it might be a little autobiographical, because Howard had lived there after their kids grew up and they sold their house in Stowe, Brooklyn, they moved to Patchard to Art Space, and they've never regretted it, and they feel like this is their life after life. Uh, let me see, what else? Other than that, uh, we had the reception for the five years, uh, in the lobby for the Patchard Arts Council, five years of curating the lobby, and that was a very well-attended reception. Uh, the show is still up, so if you have some time, pop in, and it's eighteen artists representing in Patchard Arts Council Gallery. Other than that, uh, planning board, the assisted living project that's making its way through the boards for Main Street, uh, was at the board session last Monday, and I believe that they will be, the planning board meeting tomorrow night to seek their approvals. And that's all.
What are the plan, what other things?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have it right here.
Resignation of?
Uh, yeah, except that Nick Greco's resignation from planning board with regrets. Nick is very busy with his, um, duties as a Patchard Village fireman.
And then your baby.
And then your baby. Uh, so that's a motion.
Second.
Second.
Oh, baby. Oh, with regrets, with regrets.
Okay, and then I'd like to, uh, seek approval to appoint our current alternate, Michael Viliata, as a full member of the planning board.
Second.
No favor. I, I, it's okay.
Now.
He was on the block.
He was on the block, yeah, yeah, he's a nice guy, I see. Nice young man.
Trustee Hill. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to, uh, once again, thank the Chamber, the Commendational Church for their involvement in the Pet Parade, the village. Uh, it was a great event, and first time, great showing, hoping to move many years. And, uh, second of all, yesterday, we had the Run For The Sun Liz Kelly five K, uh, which was just a beautiful event. It was two hundred and sixty runners. We had, uh, many, many, uh, people, employees from the village, residents, helping out,[1759.62] We had many, many people, employees from the village, residents, helping out, volunteering. The biggest, the only way to have a successful five K is to have a strong volunteer base in which we've been able to respond. First and foremost, Pat Seal was our M C for, this is your third year as M C, he was the first one, and he continues to do so. Deputy Mayor Creed was there with his family, but I'd like to thank Maria Justizia, Luanne Ladagano, Beth Corpak, Don Locksmith, your time, another fabulous volunteer job, Jodean, Brian Menegas, Steve Yusum. We had walkers from our staff, trustee firm, the mayor.
Him and last, but not dead last. That's all I would add.
I'm hearing over the radio, it's Code Enforcement, or Coke is calling Code Enforcement, says, can we open up West Avenue? Can we open up West Avenue? And Code Enforcement comes back, not until the mayor goes by. So you might got hung up on West Avenue. There's your Pope right there.
That was stroll.
Barbara Stark, Highway Emily, Counting, and Joanne from accounting. If I left anybody out, I apologize.
Lauren.
Oh, and Lauren, Monty, who was one of our largest contributors, she was the under-one-mile caller. And also, once again, Code Enforcement was spectacular. Every corner I turned, I had a lead car, I saw either a Coke car, or a Coke car, or an orange vest, and it really went well. Next year, we have to work on, Laura, on a mayor, I'm sorry, Cedar. I think we're gonna do the same things we did on River, we could split with Combs, because unfortunately, because of the way the run is, we have both southbound and northbound running on the same road. If we split the road, we could open it up a lot sooner to southbound traffic, while we're waiting for the northbound to come through. But that's for a different meeting. Mr. Mayor, we, last meeting, we had discussed going out to bid on a putting green for Shorefront Park, which has been very well received, but very, very difficult to get estimates on, because of its unique nature, the material that we've asked for, the installation, the low price, is all been difficult for us to get the prices from the locals. But first of all, last meeting, we had a resolution to go out to bid on the putting green, but the price apparently is less than the thirty-five thousand dollar threshold of having to go out to bid. So I'd like to make a motion to rescind last meeting's resolution to go out to bid.
Motion, second. Second. No favor? I, it's okay.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I was, we're gonna say, under general municipal law, if it's under thirty-five thousand dollars, we are able to award contract based on the three prices that we have received. Three prices that we have received are from Allstate Synthetic Turfs of Middle Island, Personal Putting Greens, the Miller Place, Big Moss Golf, which is an online company, and Southwest Greens, which was gentlemen who had made the presentation. Of the three prices that we received, additional to Southwest Greens, the owner of Allstate Synthetic is using an inferior material, we've been advised not to use, so that eliminates them. The Personal Putting Greens came in a price of twenty-four dollars per foot, and the Big Moss, the online company, sells the turf, but they don't install, which has eliminated them. The Southwest Greens have given a surprise of, what's it, twelve dollars? Twelve dollars a square foot. So I'd like to make a motion that we award a contract to Southwest Greens of, Wading River. That's a motion for a total amount, not to exceed, not to exceed.
Twenty, twelve thousand. Twenty-five thousand, that's.
It doesn't make a point.
That's not a point.
So not to exceed twenty-five.
That's it, that's it.
Right, not to exceed twenty-seven thousand.
Are we still, can we see that correct that you have made, no idea?
Yes, yeah, we had another meeting with Cornell today, Cooperative Expansion, who have given us, they've already given us two thousand dollars towards the budget, but the word of discussion has grown to receive more money than that.
Could this specific purpose?
Yes.
Because that would reduce whatever it is.
Right, and that would come right off the top.
Where's the balance come from?
Excuse me?
Where's the balance come from?
I'm gonna make a motion. Yeah, that's, they give a motion.
Also, now, I'm thinking about the word, that we have to make, crew spending, you 're going to money on that project, I mean, I thought you should, probably, probably add a game in that.
Yeah, we said that the first meeting was correct, and we accepted, then we'll have to authorize the expenditure.
So once they come through there, we can operate it formally. Okay. Motion to accept a bid for Southwest Greens for a maximum of two seventy thousand dollars. Second. No favor?
All right.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that this project can be voted through surplus, for a maximum of two seventy thousand dollars. That's a motion.
Second.
No favor?
We have the two thousand dollars in grand, is that, is that two thousand dollars? Two thousand, you said, we already had before now?
No. Well, you do, we don't.
Oh, okay, after the, okay.
Well, we don't really have the formal authorization, we're getting there.
Yeah, but you have.
What if he gets, what if we do stand down?
Yeah, and I could, I definitely don't have it, so.
Well, we have, I think I left that in, that in the, in the meeting, but, that's going out for the time.
Do you want to do that, then, if you, if the two thousand dollars is firm, is not going to change or increase?
Well, I'm just saying, if it's necessary, based on what we've learned from our order, if that two thousand dollars comes specifically to that project, I think we have to do that.
Yes, we do, nobody, you're receiving, the, the, the pages.
Let's find out, I'll find out, and then.
So then you'll include the two thousand, which we're getting, when we come to do it all once.
Okay. Is the, is he on? Oh, the, okay. Mr. Mayor, tonight, we have a representative from the Kiwanis Club, who do, as you know, do the very successful Sandra five K, Mr. Nick Harley.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor, trustees, village residents, Mayor Martin Nichols-Harden, just sort of, I know this face is here, been proud member of Kiwanis, Tadg Kiwanis, over five years now, and I'm here about the toy truck, which we've had very successful last couple of years. We went from two hundred runners, what it took on four years ago, and we've managed last year over six hundred runners last year. But that's not the, the best thing about it, is we ask the runners to come down and donate, besides paying to come run the race, they come down with a gift, which we proceed to donate to a lot of the churches and area, and we've managed to, last year, I think it was over seven hundred toys last year alone that we've gotten from that, from that race. Not to mention gaining some net proceeds, which helps out with other activities and fundraisers for the community, for the community children in the area. The race has grown, just like the village has grown in many ways, and there was a couple concerns, particularly last year, of where the race course, which was behind the brick house, running through beautiful parts of the village. We've, as you see the map, we've made up a new, a new race course, which starts and finishes down at the Seaport, not Seaport, Shorefront, Shorefront. If you can see, there's pre-supersparatory of the course itself. I'm asking for the village to approve this new race course, and also a day change as well. Typically, we've had it on a Sunday, and because of budget concerns from the fifth precincts, last year, we actually were forced to go from eleven o'clock start time, which we've always done, to a nine o'clock, and I noticed a drastic decrease in runner, runners that came down to the race, because it is December race, and I guess some people just don't like to feel like over race too much in the morning shorts. So I'm looking to change that to a Saturday, which is, I'm asking for November thirtieth, so we can actually push that back up to eleven o'clock start time for the race.
That's, that's the Christmas parade.
That's a night.
It's a lot of work.
Well, speaking of, in reference to the volunteers, I know that's like a big thing I've heard tonight, one thing about, if some of you guys participate or come down as spectators to our races, we've actually increased our volunteer base, and I feel very confident with this race course that we will have the volunteers in place for that. And in reference to the police, I've actually perfectly spoken to them about it, and they assured me that they would have ample, more than ample coverage to help us out with our race, due to the fact that instead of being a Sunday, we can do it on Saturday, which that ties into the Coke division, and would have that covered.
Does it, can I give you permission to, have you got the caveat?
No, actually, I want to get permission from the village first.
Well, you would ask me to get permission from the fifth.
Right, yes.
I was waiting for, which we gave.
This small section.
It definitely has to go to town.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm more concerned with our code enforcement having to do this in the morning, and then to have to do the parade at night on Saturday. I just, I had to speak to Jim Burridge about that. I know it's probably two different shifts, but they have a hard time calling in people on those shifts to this. Is there an alternate date that you're attracted to?
Well, we can keep that original date on a Sunday, I mean, but the only problem that, which was December seventh, which was our original date, the fact that we changed the course, and it was, like I said, I was, I'm just getting feedback from the runners and from the club members, and just looking at our numbers, we definitely took a hit from eleven o'clock start time to, I mean, just giving you some example, two years ago, to our second and last run, we had over seven hundred runners, when we had eleven o'clock, eleven-thirty start time, and last year, when it's a nine o'clock, we actually had a decrease of five hundred runners. And I actually reached out to a lot of those runners, why they didn't come down, and a lot of them come out, a lot of these runners are recruited from out of Nassau County or Queens, and it's just too big of a deal for them to come out this way. So I was just looking to, you know.
The seventh, is that, is that like the seventh?
I mean, the eighth, we get this.
Saturday is the seventh. Is that a good date for you?
That's, that's fine, that works.
Yeah, all right, that'd be much better.
Yeah, because you're gonna stretch code there from nine in the morning till eleven o'clock at night, and it just, you know, do you have that, what you guys?
And the first part as well, it's a responsive parade, so.
They'll be setting up here, then you got to go to Main Street to set up, but back here, it just, because it's a, it's a scramble for your own barricades. I didn't do it, my dad also was top of like barricades. That's our village, I mean, there's a downtown, you, you've done ways.
I've done, I've gotten the town has given, um, barricades, I've gotten them on board about that. And actually, Kiwanis, we actually have our own, with my business, we actually have safety barriers and stuff as well.
What's the duration, eleven till when?
Typically, it's a, it takes about forty-five minutes to do the whole one.
So one o'clock, is that?
No, if the race starts at eleven o'clock, we'd, you know, it'd be done by eleven forty-five, total o'clock.
So no walkers, then?
Oh, we got walkers, you just have to walk fast.
Like the mayor.
And one thing, so, so you know, what I've done actually last year to Bill, actually, I've got more detailed reference to the road closures, you know, we don't have to, like, and if you look at the course, we don't have to, that's something I will relate to, Bill, within a week, I would have all this detailed, but we don't have to close the whole court, like all the streets down, the entire forty-five minutes. You know, we can actually, if you look at it, we can actually close, like up from Bay Avenue, which is a mile and a half mark, we actually keep that part closed for the slow runners slash walkers, and we reopen Road Avenue and all the side streets.
You're, this is different than the one that I submitted to the police department, right?
Yeah, I showed them this new race course, too.
Showed the fifth?
Yeah.
They liked it?
Yeah, the sergeant, man, that.
Now, because this, this course is going up on Edwards, right? The course before then, it did not, correct?
Yes, yeah, the original, yes.
Yeah, I don't, Edwards, to me, is a, a pretty important east-west border town.
I can, I can, I can tweak, I mean, that, that part of the course, I can, I can change. I mean, we can go down, instead of going Edwards, I'm just quickly looking at this, I mean, I have, you know, talked to the gentleman who's doing the certification for the course, but the runners can go down South Breeze Drive, and loop up that way, up Grove, instead of going up towards Edwards Street. And instead of going up to Edwards, they would go west on Carmody, when they go on Bay Avenue, instead of going Edwards, they can make a left on Carmody Street.
All right, we'll talk about, we'll talk about it.
All right.
So tonight, you're pretty much here to get the date approved?
Yeah.
What you take, Bill?
What's that?
What you take on the date.
The sun? That's the only date. It's my turn.
Is it, is it Saturday?
Saturday, Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday.
Okay.
A motion.
You don't have any on your house, then? Most of the time?
A little bit, hogs.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the Patchard Kiwanis Club be allowed to hold their annual toy truck five K.
Five K.
Summer seventh, Saturday, summer seventh, at eleven o'clock.
Motion, set. No favor? I, it's okay.
And you will give us a formal application, so that you know what services are needed by.
Oh, definitely. I have all the details with you, Bill.
I'm sure.
I have everything, barricades, cones, times, streets, everything.
Get on my arrows.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have covered by the board. Cover.
Okay, who?
You go ahead.
Can't say. Josephine Miller, two seven six six Daniel. How timely that volunteerism is being mentioned tonight, it evidences community spirit, and what a nice counterpoint to the ugly portrayal of the village by the documentary aired on Channel twenty-one last night. I don't know how many people looked at it. If you didn't look, you say it's a lot of pressure. An attempt to indict an entire community for the actions of a few. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna label anybody anything, they're adolescents. I'm not, I'm not going to rave and rant about it. It just seems to me that something else needs to be presented, a different point of view, a broader point of view, something that acknowledges the complexities of the issue. And who should be presenting that? Something should be published, The Times, Newsday, inappropriate for somebody on the board to be writing something. It seems to me we just can't stand, they essentially sent their accomplices to murder. That's essentially what they said.
I, I saw a couple ones go, my reaction was very much the same, because it was somebody that. Is it appropriate for anybody on the board to write something?
I always have a very difficult time doing that, because it sounds so defensive, that they said this, or they say that. And then it almost sounds like, like, I mean, it should be anybody's voice, and I don't say any criticism, I just say practically, it should come from this chair, it should come from the mayor's chair, that defense. But, you know, we're getting into year five of it, and I keep waiting for the next vigil, because that's what we're going to have. This community handled itself so well. We handle ourselves with pride, we handle ourselves with dignity. And I've said this to any number of people, this community had every opportunity and every reason to vote, because it wanted it, but it never did. Took, had to step back and remember who we are as a community, that we've always been a community, that we, since the fifties, there's been a Puerto Rican, Latino, Spanish influence in this community. Jesus Christ, it goes back to kicking puberty in the early seventies, to somebody, when I first came out of the village, born in the eighties, there was a problem with the, the people that he went to. You know, I think, if I'm saying that way, it sounds, but I don't know how much more defense we can have regarding it. And I don't, just me, and we pay differences in other things, but this, I think, we're squarely together on, if somebody wants to help me figure out a way to defend the village in a proper way, I'll look at it, okay?
It doesn't have to be defensive.
And that's, that's my, I guess, that's all I would add.
If you're presenting the village in its entirety, if you're presenting everything about the village, and you're not just focusing on this one thing, then it's not defensive. They show only one small part. Does racism exist? Sure, it exists everywhere. Hatchet is not different from any other place. But that's not who we are completely. And I think that if we focus only on that, that's not us, that's not us. It is defensive, but if, if the complexities of the situation are acknowledged, then I think it comes off in a different way.
I'll create something. And I will send a few emails, make a look at it, because I don't just look at it to see, you know, I'm sitting here talking about it, you know, and it's, it's a piece I could probably get into the news day with them.
I hope so.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I honestly think that responding to that kind of garbage is respecting it. When some idiot politician out in the Midwest says, women have bodily mechanisms that prevent them from getting pregnant when they're raped, you, you respond to that kind of idiocy, you're respecting it. The, the, the other thing is, the only audience that's accepting the message in that piece that was on is an audience who wants to believe that.
Well, that's a good point.
They're not convincing anybody, and we're not going to convince those people who believe it already, that the mayor writes.
Well, you know, a year ago, I went to a, the New York, the National Conference of Mayors, and I went to Arizona.
You didn't see Bill Kelly. I live in Virginia.
I was gonna rip out a cigar, but, and I spoke at a conference about diversity, they showed this film, and I, I had an article, and I'll send you a copy of it, that was printed in the Air International, which talks about it, maybe, and I had sent it to the news day last year, and they said it wasn't the right time to do it. Maybe now, but it is now, with the five-year anniversary. I'll send you, I'll link to it, and I don't have your email address, so.
I'll get you.
Okay. But I will absolutely, within the next two days, get you something. Take a look at it. Have a look, thank you. Thank you very, thanks, Joe.
I, I agree with Josephine, and I disagree with Tom, is that something does need to be said, and I don't even need to make reference of this documentary, that he's kind of portrayed who we are, and, you know, I guess painted a picture than what was presented, and let people know about our diversity, and that we've gone to incorporate, you know, every walk of life in itself, just, I don't even need to make mention of it, and don't even talk about their slant of the story.